Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker. Engleton.
Open meeting and blind statement read.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, including Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda was posted in prominent public view at the office of the superintendent.
Thank you, Terry. Item number three, consent agenda. All following items will concern reports of items and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a simple vote on any or all of these items. Consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. Are there any additions of items of good business to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Minutes of the October 2nd, 2023, regular meeting, the October 9th, and the October 23rd, special meetings, approval of finance report, approval of the extra duty assignment schedule, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund fundraisers, approval of the activity fund inter-account transfers, approval of the child nutrition report, and declaring any items of surplus.
Okay, so we'll go to agenda item 3.2, our minutes from October 2nd, 9th, and 23rd. Seen errors with those minutes. Agenda item 3.3, you have the top attachment, or the October investments, those are all current and up-to-date. If you'll open the bottom attachment also, you can see monthly here update on our chargeables. So gross production, you can see we're 355,000 down, almost 356,000 down from the year before. Motor vehicle, 7,000 down, REATAX, 22,000 down, and then we're up just a little bit, up those others. And so, it's not particularly cause for alarm, but I think it is certainly something that, you know, I'm contending to monitor as we start looking in the future, just kind of planning for that downturn in gross production. And we do anticipate that we're going to see some higher prices. Production went up, I believe it was about three, four months ago, so we're going to see some of that, those newer prices, or that increase in price in the next couple months. But we are so far back in our collection on gross production, it'd be hard to catch up to where we were last year. You can look at the second page of the attachment, and you can see all those numbers there graphically. A comparison of our revenue from FY '24 to FY '23, if you look on page four, we have a revenue decrease of 128,000 total, and we have an expense increase of 565,000. And so, a lot of that expense is going to be your teacher pay raise and your natural inflationary costs. Okay, agenda item 3.4, we have activity, or extra duty assignment schedule. I believe that we have three additions to our extra duty assignment schedule. Appreciate the work done by Ms. Martini, Coach Wilson, Coach Foster. We have Gina Wilson, she will be assistant with our middle school basketball programs, has already begun that, working with those students. So Coach Johnson, Coach LaCia, and Coach Wilson are all three working with our seventh and eighth grade boys and girls. We also have Coach Chamberlain going down there and working with those student athletes while football is still going on. We have Sean Stevens, a band assistant. You'll remember that we lost Mr. Alexander this past year, and so Sean Stevens is going to help with our band program. And then finally, we have Sasha Kirkpatrick. Sasha has done a great job of going and assisting with our sixth grade basketball students, helping with checkout, helping manage that, those students while Ty is coaching. Agenda item 3.5, we have our activity fund report, and so if you open the top attachment, it is the report for the year-to-date in all of those activity accounts. And the bottom attachment, I believe, or excuse me, the top attachment is year-to-date, the bottom attachment is October. If you look at those, you'll see account number 914, that is our FFA account, and see a significant increase in that account from our blue and gold sales. Okay, agenda item 3.6, we have some fundraisers here to, we bring back to you a little bit later for approval. The first that you'll see on page one is a hat day or dress-up day for students if they choose to do this fundraiser, students can pay for a sense of a dollar, and then that dollar goes towards the middle school activity count, which can then be used for character awards or PBIS awards. Look at page two, we have the guessing jar, again, another fundraiser for the middle school activity count. If you look at page three, we have a pie in the face, another, I think they vote on who will get the pie in the face, and then number four is, or page four, excuse me, is a paper airplane toss that they would use at the basketball game as a fundraiser. The second group of attachments, these attachments just came in today from Ms. Tyree, so Ms. Tyree has really done an outstanding job implementing her new project lead-away classes, and then also TSA, and she's also done some esports, and is just really doing some great things. Because we started the TSA program so late, she didn't get those fundraisers turned in. And so, if you look at those with me, she is going to, so one of the things she has through her networking, was able to visit with other TSA sponsors, and one of the way sponsors are raising money for their TSA programs at other schools is through the selling of suckers. And so, she is requested to be able to do that, and then they're also going to be looking at a meal, and it says football game, but I believe that should say basketball. They will also be doing some hot chocolate and coffee for students to sell in the mornings on various Fridays. Okay, agenda item 3.7, activity fund inter-account transfers. If you'll open up that inter-account transfer, what we had here was middle school students are transferring $475 from middle school student council. Students are transferring $475 from their account to the high school student council activity account for meetings and fees. I believe we just had our district meetings here in Alba a couple weeks ago. Agenda item 3.8, if you'll open that attachment, have our monthly totals for our lunches and breakfasts. You can see that we are down in both of those, but just remember, we did not have as many days at school this past month. And so, we normally see that drop because you have fall break three days, and you have your Monday that we observe for parent-teacher conference. And then agenda item 3.9, we do not have any items of surplus. Any questions regarding the consent agenda?
That's a great question. I'm hoping that it's not me.
We'll see.
I don't know. What are you willing to give?
500.
Oh, man.
It goes to a good cause.
I make a motion, we, oh, you're asking for a motion, I'm sorry, Madam Chairman. Yes, you are, okay.
Guys, we're going to get to alternate.
I know we are. Well, I'm going to start, make a motion, we accept 3.1 through 3.9 as presented. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Item number four, vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for fiscal year '24. 4.1, general fund as referenced, 4.2, building fund as referenced, 4.3, child nutrition fund as referenced, 4.4, gift fund as referenced.
So agenda item 4.1, if you'll open the top attachment there. A few of the expenses that we have there, $1,400, purchase order number 317 with O'Reilly's, so those were some batteries that were purchased for our high school cleaning machines. Purchase order number 334, $4,400, peak environment, spraying all of our sites. Purchase order number 345, Kami editing software district-wide for PDF documents. Purchase order number 356, $71,760, Tiny Eye Therapy Service. We lost our previous contract, we didn't lose it, they were unable to staff it with, I believe it was Chatterbox, they were unable to staff it by finding a speech pathologist. And so, I really appreciate the work Ms. Potter's done in this. It is, you know, you go on any job board, and there is a need for speech pathologists across all school districts, and many of them are now going into the contracted route. So Hattie did a lot of work on this, and was able to acquire this contract, Tiny Eye Therapy Service. And so, we hope with approval, we'll be able to begin working with them. And then purchase order number 358, you're going to see a large purchase order there, That is the first year, that's the purchase order for the first year of our potential lease agreement for our activity funds. And so, that will be an agenda item later on. Any questions regarding, might mention, purchase order number 324, and Ms. McDermott, you can maybe kind of expound on this a little bit. $8,000 for the executive search fee, and so, maybe inform the rest of the board administrative team kind of how that search will, will, the timeline for that.
Most of, because both of you were here.
Yes.
We did approve that, we did work on the timeline, and it's pretty accurate. They did push it out just a little bit, to the 15th maybe, to accommodate just some workload there at the OSSABA. We're working on some dates, we've got most of the dates for the meetings, for the open meetings that come to. We have not, they've not gotten back to us on the one. We had some conflicts on, on just one of them, that became four community-wide, I think. Then now, I think everything's good. Everybody, thanks to everybody who's trying to help us with some surveys that we get to fill out, and of course Terry, you know, our officer. So we, I think we're doing fine. We'll locate soon, and then the work will be.
And we can provide some more updates as we get through that each month, to make sure that everybody's as informed as they can be. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the general fund, before we move on to building fund? Okay, agenda item 4.2, our building fund, if you'll open the, excuse me, I guess I skipped an attachment, we have payroll there, back up on 4.1. So all of those that you will see there are new hires or substitutes. Agenda item 4.2, our building fund, we just have, I think, maybe two items of this fund. We have A to Z construction, purchase order number 48, for $10,000. That is to repair. We've got another area in Lincoln where the floor appears to be buckling, and so, we mentioned a few weeks ago, we were going to have some coring that took place there. Thank you to Mrs. Webster, they did come up, I believe it was Saturday, a week from this past Saturday, and began testing that floor, and so we are waiting the report for that. Once we get the report for that, and feel like we can proceed, then we'll fix that title. So that's kind of an open purchase order, we went ahead and encumbered that month. Purchase order number 49, 897,10, is chiller maintenance with Harrison Energy. Child nutrition fund, I believe we have one purchase order out, the child nutrition fund this month. Burkett &amp; Sons, $4,575,71, a new cooler, we'll go get Longfellow. Then agenda item 4.4, our gift fund, if you'll remember, we had our finance programs received a very generous gift from Alba State Bank. We divided that money amongst them, and Nacy is finishing up some of her purchases through that. So you'll see purchase order number 13, and purchase order number 14, $1,600 for sheet music, and then she spent about $853 on some other materials to support her middle school and high school programs. Any questions regarding our general fund, building fund, child nutrition, or gift fund?
I'll undertake a motion to approve item number four.
Move to approve items 4.1 through 4.4.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Item number five, superintendent's report.
Okay, we'll start with our resignations, retirements, reassignments. We have one resignation from Gracie Gillian. Gracie is going to be moving back close to home for some health reasons. Gracie did a really good job, we are excited to see her go. She was at Longfellow, so later in the agenda, be hiring her replacement. Agenda item 5.2, I put this attachment on here for your reference, future reference. We met last Thursday with the construction manager, architect, architects, and gave them all of the priorities that were put together by our staff, our stakeholder committee, and then also, if you remember, when we came and prioritized at a board meeting, we put all that information together to give to them, so they could begin looking at what some cost estimates would be for some of our capital improvement. I had to make a couple of adjustments to that agenda, one of them being, we've talked about the structural issues from Lincoln, and we looked at three different potential ways to mitigate that, whether it's through the building of one elementary school, whether it's through an addition to Longfellow and Washington, and then also maybe, you know, can we build something out at Lincoln? And so, they're going to explore all of those options that we can then bring back to our teachers, our community, and this board, and try to find the best solution for the district. You'll also notice down there for Ag Farmer group, that was pretty open-ended, and our Ag teachers have come together and done some research, and looked at some things that they needed, and so I've added to that for you all to review, and also have sent that to our architect and construction management company. A lot of things are really contingent on our structural issues at Lincoln and the report that we get back there, and so we're kind of in a holding pattern from that perspective. I'd also mention that we had our adjuster come out and look at our roofs, would have been last Tuesday and Wednesday. Spoke to him today, he will have those reports prepared within the next two to three weeks, and get those to OSIG, and then OSIG will begin discussions with us. Also want to recognize our Teachers of the Year. These Teachers of the Year voted on by their peers, and so, high school, Janelle Hammer, our middle school is Carly Williams, Lincoln Elementary, April Ridgeway, Longfellow Elementary, Dawn Selfhill, and then Washington Early Childhood, Randy Peace. And so, all of these very deserving winners will be vying for the District Teacher of the Year, that will be determined in the next couple of weeks. I believe that's all I have. So, agenda item 5.3 is our strategic plan tonight. We have culture and community presentation by Mrs. Williamson, Mrs. Webster. They've done a lot of work on this, and so, I'll turn it over to them.
We have a title page, so you know.
It's the board meeting of number six.
You know where we are, that's good.
Culture and community update, next slide please, yes. Do you want to start?
So, thank you for being organized for us, put together. So these are just kind of our common goals that are on our culture, community, and one of the surveys that we sent out, it was about how we want, our parents want to be communicated with. We took that information last August, and we've now got Parent Square, which seems to be going really well. Each school uses it separately, we can also use it district-wide. It's one means of communication where we can, parents can get emails, text messages, and come through the app. We can also send individual messages to parents, and so I think that that's going really well. I've had a lot of feedback from the community, and how they really like how it's going. And then, we are pushing out the community climate survey right now, Washington's got theirs, Longfellow, we kind of did it, decided to go one, one day, wait a couple days, send another one, so we didn't send a parent that has a child at four of our schools with four surveys to do in one day. So, we kind of pushed it out, and it's staggering, and middle school will be doing theirs.
Ours went on Friday, sorry.
Okay, right.
I should say 10.
Can you, would you send that, we can probably find it somewhere, but maybe for our search and stuff, would you send us a copy of it? I mean, is the same one going to each school?
Yes.
Just, we all have emails now with our public schools. You'll just send us a copy of that, that way we can see what you're asking.
Sure. And it's that same survey we've sent out each year, so we can't get it, that data and.
Is it the same one?
Yes.
Maybe I should have seen.
I think we modified some things, maybe last year, kind of got rid of some.
Have you seen it?
No, but it would still be good to have what they've sent out, because that's something that, I would assume they would ask.
I'm sure it is.
And the next time we're presenting, we can gather all that data and present on what we count from that survey.
And then our teacher climate survey will be sent out in the spring. And these are some of the things, starting with Washington, so.
Yeah, so what you just looked at was like district-wide goals for each building, and then each building picked out two culture and community action steps that they wanted to complete this year. So we've got it separated by building, and what two action steps they chose, or whatever they wanted to update us on that's going on. So Washington, one of ours was providing PD for all staff on selected character, education, common language, and expectations within faculty meetings. We, we haven't had like an all-school assembly in many years that I know of, and that was something the teachers really wanted to do, was kind of get parents back in to see their children be recognized, and so the teachers decided on character awards that they felt were appropriate for pre-K, kinder, first grade, so that was actually really exciting and fun, and I think our biggest concern was we thought, oh gosh, how are the kids going to behave when we have 233 little ones in the gym? Oh my gosh, they did wonderful. And actually, even the parents were like, oh my gosh, like the kids were clapping for each other. They may not have realized they weren't the one getting the award, I don't know, but it was really, it felt successful and fun because we got to do something like that. But our teachers have been talking about it in their PLCs, and we've kind of discussed like, how do we go deeper into the character development with our students? So our school counselor has been doing it in her class, but we're looking at how we go a little deeper with our students. And then, community involvement and satisfaction was a professional behavior standard that addressed a welcoming environment, and I kind of grouped our assembly into that because we welcomed parents in, and like I said before, I don't think it's always been open to come see awards, just because it's hard to coordinate that with three grade levels. So that was kind of a part of that, and we had our elementary fundraiser that all elementary did, we had a lot of community involvement, a lot of businesses supported us. We hardly spent a dime on that, and that's because businesses donated their time and efforts and their talents to help support us. We sent out the parent-community survey, and then we had a grandparents' day to, to welcome people into our building. So, just kind of working on making our school a welcoming environment with that one. So those are both a lot to report on. I'll also report on Longfellow. They submitted the annual community climate survey, they sent theirs out November 1st, so they're starting to get some results back from that. And on their roadblocks, which we've kind of felt was kind of, it's similar every month for everybody, is a matter of time and scheduling. And there are a lot of things that pop up in the day that kind of prevent you from spending a lot of time on your strategic plan of goals, and so you got to regroup and think, gosh, yeah, we did do something for that. Yeah, that makes a strategic plan. So, so that's an issue, I think, impressive work for everyone. And then the next step, which she had mentioned too, is sending out that teacher survey, which is really important, and getting feedback from our individual teachers for each site.
And at the end, one of ours was utilizing our TIA and PLC process to support our gifted and talented students, and not just our gifted and talented students, we really talked about, you know, how many more students can we bridge and enrich in our classrooms? So, we did meet in a PLC to create a list of ideas to meet the needs of our students, and then we kind of discussed, how are we going to do this, who's going to do it, when are we going to do it, and kind of came down with a list of things that we can, that the teachers can easily implement in the classroom, maybe some more like our writing club, talked about adding some more clubs in, and they had all kinds of ideas, and so they're pretty excited about some of the things that they want to bring in.
Can I stop first, will you tell them about the writing club?
Sure.
Because that was, that was really cool, we had some students on radio talking about the writing club, and so, maybe we'll start, talk a little about that.
So, actually, the kids went to Mrs. Binningfield, kind of, they got excited after all of the writing that we did last year, which was super exciting. But then, they had asked Mrs. Binningfield, because some of them go to her in title, and wanted to do more writing. So, Mrs. Binningfield being who she is, she's, she loves that, and she's very creative. So, some students, there's about 25, that come into her during lunch and recess, and they go get their lunch, and they do a little bit of writing, some different types of creative writing. I think they talked about.
Writing, painting.
Yeah, Andy's Journey, and then some, some play, playwriting type stuff, and I believe they'll probably perform.
Some skits, yeah.
Yeah, some skits during our literacy night in center. So, and then they do art projects with that. So Mrs. Binningfield's taking each fourth grade class down and doing a big fun art project with them, and so it's really boosted a lot of excitement for writing and being creative, and Mrs. Binningfield loves that, and she's so good at it, and the kids, it's just fun to see kids want to go inside and do that during their recess a bunch of times. So, that's been fun, and that's kind of what we're hoping to build more of with that other stuff that we were talking about. No real roadblocks with this, just because we've made time for it, try, you know, little bit at a time. So, our next plan is to meet again and prioritize at least five things that we can start implementing right away, both in the classroom and extra time, so.
Facebook had a meet post on there, the high school kids coming down.
That was fun, yes.
With your STEM lab people, that was cute, that was fun.
Yes, that was fun, and it just kind of came together, I had asked, reached out to Mrs. Tyree about helping us get some things set up, because I know she has a lot of experience with that, and she just kind of popped in one day, like, oh, I forgot you emailed me, so she came in, and she said, how about this Thursday, we'll get something together? So she brought her kids over, we pulled some kids from all four fourth grade classes, and they went down there, spent about 45 minutes, trying to have to build 3D creations, so that at some point we can do, use our 3D printer. So, that was super exciting. It's hard to get in there and know what to do with that stuff, and we only get trained on it once a month, so to have her come in and do that with the kids and the other, it was, it was so fun to see and watch the, there were some really good high school students that were so into it, teaching those kids.
It looked like it was very successful.
It was fun, it was a good time. Our second is to annually provide professional development on the common language for our faculty, so we use PRIDE as common language, and have expectations for all areas of our school. We have not had any formal, professional, new formal. We have not had any formal professional, new formal professional development amongst our staff. We probably should. So I think roadblocks here again, we've spent our time focusing on other priorities, like our STEM lab and some other things. So how to overcome, accomplish our goals with starting programs for DT, get that, get that done and out of the way, and then maybe we can move forward and add something else. And next steps will be to add this to our faculty meeting in January, as we come back from this. For the middle school, they had improving involvement and satisfaction. The middle school has implemented Parent Square for all extracurricular teams, organizations, and for the general communications to parents. And then next steps for them, they really didn't have any roadblocks with this, they've just got it going. So the next step is to look for more opportunities to share information through Parent Square. Probably notes and things, attachments that we can use or send with this, which is exciting. And then also improved student behavior, what was accomplished. They put into place and updated their PBIS committee, and held a meeting to discuss upcoming events. And then they plan to continue with these meetings. And for the high school, what they have accomplished is also increase of Parent Square. They have created a professional, the behavior standard that addresses a welcoming environment, a positive initial impressions for the school, prepare for parent-teacher conferences, and then the annual community climate survey. And then for improving student behavior, they have accomplished providing professional development for all staff on selected character education, words, common language, expectations in faculty meetings, discuss in faculty meetings, student behavior and expectations, discuss issues that are servicing and how teachers and administrators can address them. And their next steps will be analyzing that data from the survey, continue discussions on the character education, common language, expectations, and then also to continue to provide professional development for all staff on selected character education, common language.
Do you guys have any questions for us or any administrators on some of our action steps?
What's been the most rewarding for your teachers to do this year? Work is work, nobody is, you just ask, continually ask for more things, pile up more things. As you look at while you're trying to implement, what's been the most rewarding? And it can't be anything except maybe enthusiasm of the.
I think that's what I saw when, because I really didn't know how it was going to go. Working with, you know, pulling another thing in and work, you know, trying to find ways to get more enrichment for, you know, our students in the classroom, and the teachers just took it, you know, got excited about it. And right, I can, I can sew, I can do this, you know, we can do, so that was exciting to see them excited to do it.
Right.
I agree, I feel like anything that's like immediately student-related, which are all related to the students, but ours like for culture and community are pretty like, you see how it affects the students right away. You know, when you're talking about security and facilities, like, yes, it affects our students, but you don't get to see them utilizing it right away, like that stuff takes time. So I think for me, it was, yeah, seeing the involvement of community and people, like being together at our fundraiser, that's the most rewarding.
And that common language, is that between schools, the common language is common throughout the schools? Or just within the schools, everybody kind of have that common language?
Each school has their own like common language that we use. But we all use voice level, like level zero, one, two, three, four. But each site, for elementary at least, is more like what's developmentally appropriate for our kids, yes.
Are we seeing improvements in student behavior across the board?
Some days, we do.
You're asked up on a Monday.
A Monday after the time change.
A Monday after Halloween, the first night, move on to time change.
Well, we've done a lot of work on positive behavior.
The majority of our students have very positive, great behavior. And I think it is.
I think you worked hard, and you had a lot of.
I think it's the results of those.
They know what you're saying.
But it sounds like we still are still working on it.
And I feel like too, it's just interesting to see different groups. I mean, my building is just different this year, and it's just a different community of students. And they seem like fourth and fifth grade students, sort of. My fourth and fifth grade students seeming older and just, it's just a different, different, you know, we still have some of that behavior. And I feel like trying to attack me personally, taking that, trying to handle that behavior in a different situation, get them out of the classroom more, so it's not so distracting for the student, and so hard for the teacher. So that's really what I'm trying to work on, which makes it harder for other people. But at least it's out of the classroom and it's out of the teachers, so that they can still have that, which I think then helps with that overall behavior in the classroom.
I think the behaviors are, I think we've got great kids, we have obviously really good teachers. I think what you see is some of the behaviors that maybe cause disruption are much greater. And it may only, and it's not many.
Right.
But the disruptions are much greater and louder and can cause more confusion than probably we all grew up with or when we began our teaching career song. So now it's a matter of, okay, how do we, you know, we really got the whole. Now how do we reach the few and make sure we're managing their behavior and they're successful in the classroom setting and the classroom environment?
I just know you've worked really hard. And I just wonder, it's kind of nice to see the results.
And I think our teachers feel that too, because it also has affected them of how they, what their perspective. Like, look at the percentage, when you do have a behavior, look at the percentage of how many behaviors that are negative we're dealing with compared to the many positive behaviors we're dealing with, so.
I think it's pretty similar like everything that we do, is it's always easy to, on a Monday after school, to talk about the one instance that maybe was a pretty major disruption, and then forget about the rest of the hours.
Right, yes.
You're right.
You know, I think that.
That's part of public school.
I was going to say that the hard but rewarding thing is, you know, we're all in communication with each other. And so Jenny may say, hey, look, this is, this is the issues that we've had with this kid. This is, you know, how many times this has happened, this is how we dealt with it here. And they come up to the middle school, and I hit seventh grade with them, and I go back, I'm like, Jenny, we don't have any. We, you know, there are, you know, but those major ones that she was dealing with at Lincoln, you know, sometimes they mature through. And so there's, you know, there's always going to be things that happen. But, you know, getting a hold on some of those big behaviors, you know, is pretty.
It just seemed like to me, like the past few years, we've dealt with some real extreme things that, you know, and we will deal with it every day. So when we hear about something, it's very different for me anyway, because I'm away. Well, I will say, the six students that I've had the privilege of writing my float, every one of them knew exactly how they were selected. And I, because I asked them, I said, well, how'd you get selected? And they said, because of my gotchas. And they knew, and I thought, well, there you go. Now, I'm not sure they could tell me what they gotcha gotcha for. And it was, oh, and they were so proud of that. So, I mean, good, I mean, they knew why it was so bad. It was very refreshing to see that.
Thank you.
Good for your heart.
Great job.
All right. Is that, that's the. Items of current business, 6.1, discussion of possible board action. Vote to approve an offer of employment to applicant number one, number two, and number three, non-certified positions for the 23, 24 school year.
So we're going to bring to the board, three offers of employment here. Jessica Gilchrist will be a paraprofessional at Longfellow. He is going to replace Gracie Gilligan. We have Sandra Ivara, who will also replace at Longfellow. And I may have this backwards, don't I, probably? I think Sandra Ivara is going to be at Longfellow also to help with a student that needs some support there. And then we have Ricardo Rivera, who will be at the high school. And Ricardo is going to be replacing the resignation of Rochelle Wright, a month ago. So I would recommend, offer of employment to applicant one, two, and three.
Thank you. Motion?
Move to approve the offer of employment for applicants one, two, and three.
Second.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Item number 6.2, discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve a lease purchase contract with Alva State Bank for the 24 National Ultra Coachliner Bus Renewable, each year for three years, beginning November the 6th, 2023.
So this is what we've discussed over the course of the last couple of months. We brought this Ultra Coachliner Bus up for the board to tour this summer. We've gone through with our attorneys and with Alva State Bank, and were able to complete this lease. This will be a good thing for our district, our bus fleet is getting older. This will allow us to begin some replacement of that. And so I would recommend approval of this three-year lease for the Ultra Coachliner Bus.
Is it, this might be the silly question. Okay, so it is a purchase price, so it is ours at the end of this new year lease.
Correct. Alva State holds the title until.
So it is lease-to-purchase.
And we've lease-to-purchase our route buses. We have not ever done a lease-to-purchase with activity buses normally. And I, my experience has been that we've always purchased and used activity buses. And so this will be one of the first times we've purchased a new activity bus, which allows for that lease purchase.
Any other need for delivery?
Well, we did not get a response back on delivery. But prior, I'm going to say about three months ago, when we started this project process, they were five to eight months out. They say that manufacturing has picked up, but I think we all know, I mean, just from our experience through construction and any, anything else, I wouldn't, I think it will be closer to the eight months than the five months.
Eight months over now?
Correct.
Gosh, okay. That's 5.25, looks like a nice.
Yes, so we submitted a, to all of our local banks, the opportunity to give us a rate and receive those submissions, and Alva State had the best rate.
That's great.
Maintenance for this, or warranty? What, what happens if we have issues? Do we work on it?
Well, so, I mean, we're going to have to continue with any type of transportation. Mr. Ellis is not a mechanic, and so we'll continue to take our fleet to our, our and. Tea? Diesel, Mr. Burton. We also feel like we're at a little bit of an advantage, because National is out of Tulsa. And so we feel like if there are any major issues, those repairs are going to be easier. You know, in the past, we've had to take our Sentras and, and think of those Coaches, we've had to take them to Dallas, to ABC in Dallas, which is pretty difficult when you need repairs and maintenance. And so we'll just continue to lean on Richard and National to toss up our repairs.
Surely there'll be some warranty.
Yes, there'll be warranty with it. I don't know the specifics to the warranty, but there is warranty with the transmission body and so forth.
Do we pay on delivery? Or do we send the money up front?
So what we've got to do tomorrow, pending approval tonight, is they want a letter from Alva State that in fact, they will be purchasing, purchasing it to then execute the manufacturing. And we're not going to actually begin payment until we receive the bus.
Can I take a motion? So move.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.3, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve a contract with Tiny Eye Technologies Corporation for speech pathology services for the 23, 24 school year.
So this is what I mentioned earlier during our purchase orders. Ms. Potter's done an excellent job of acquiring this contract with this company. And so they will handle virtual speech therapy. I mentioned earlier, we had a company called Chatterbox, they were unable to find a therapist to service that contract. And so Tiny Eye is able to find a therapist, and so they will be our virtual speech therapists.
Where are they at of?
So the lady that I've talked to, Hattie, has been in Saskatchewan, Canada. The therapist, I'm not sure. Therapist is out of.
Oh, it is out of.
The therapist, they're just the contracting services.
Is that for one year?
Yes. And we, I mean, we continue to post our speech language pathology job. We've talked to, looking at, we've actually also posted a speech language pathology assistant, which we've not done for, just trying to get some kind of interest, and there's just not interest out there right now.
Motion for 6.3?
Move to approve item 6.3.
Second.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Discussion with possible board action, vote to approve following board dates as referenced.
Uh, thank you to Ms. Owen for getting this together, these dates. These are all the first Monday of the month, except for January 8th, the September meeting, and July 11th, and June 28th. These are all scheduled for Alva High School.
Motion? Make a motion to approve the calendar for board meeting dates presented.
Second.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
6.5, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve a Board of Education election resolution to call for a school election to vote for a Board of Education member from office number four.
So the primary election, this resolution will set forth, the election primary will be February 13th, 2024, with then a general election if necessary on April 2nd. The filing period is December 4th, meeting at 8:00 a.m., and closes on December 6th at 5:00 p.m. Recommend approval of agenda item 6.5.
Move to approve item 6.5 as you.
Second.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Item 6.6, discussion of possible board action, vote to elect the following as a new member of the Board of Directors of the Oakville Public School Investment Interlocal Cooperation. This is a Sander.
Yes.
Request.
In general, the board has voted yes in the past for these nominations, bro.
My judges.
Yeah.
All righty, do we have a motion to vote yes? So move.
Second.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
6.7, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve an Alva State travel request from Alava Cafe sponsor Chad Locker for students to attend the Kansas Beef Expo Livestock Judging Contest in Lyons, Kansas on December 7th and 8th, 23.
So you said the attachment there for the Alva State travel request of Mr. Locker and our judging group, I would recommend approval of this opportunity for those students.
Will we approve item 6.7?
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Nice American farmer degrees that were ordered to, what, three of our students?
Looks good.
Last week. 6.8, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve Tim Argo Superintendent to submit an opioid, opioid. to submit an opioid, opioid abatement grant award application with a letter of intent to the Oklahoma Opioid Abatement Board on behalf of the Alva School Board. That's a mouthful.
Okay, so if you will open up that attachment, we got information a week ago regarding this abatement money that was going to be provided to entities across the state. And you only have until November 8th to submit your letter of intent to apply for this grant money next year. And so, we went ahead and, went ahead and provided this letter of intent, and the district could determine next year if they wanted to forward with that. But our board meeting works out good for us. There's a lot of schools that don't have their board meetings this first month, or first Monday of the month, and are not going to be able to get this. It worked out well for us. Many folks aren't going to be able to do this. So, again, it doesn't tie us to anything, but allows the district that opportunity in the future to apply for that money.
Second, connection to attend, which are available, like the universities are doing for opioid...
I don't know. I'm not sure about that.
It's a common grant.
And there's a, there's a list of items that's approved through law that you have to apply for, but this, this allows the district to be able to apply for that grant next year.
Is the timeline always this first, this time of year?
This is new, from what we understand, Shane. I don't, I've never known of this grant for us. We received it from the State Department of Ed and last week, and then got more guidance through COSA, and kind of gave us the wording. The Attorney General came in, because so many districts don't have board meetings, and so their board can't give approval. And the Attorney General came in and just gave a notice and said, you can't submit it without board approval, there may be another round.
Maybe.
Later. So, don't want, I don't know what law will entail, but I don't want the district to miss out on a grant opportunity that could find some use, yeah, could find some use.
Well, what we find the details, we should have the option to know, not participate in, if one, it's not something that this school district would want.
Correct.
Entertained motion?
Will we approve item six point eight?
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Items of current business?
Would like to draw the attention of Harper Houston, Houston. How'd she say her last name?
Houston.
Houston. And Alva High School Student Council is running for state vice president next weekend at the OASC State Convention. And they run against other schools, but Harper would be the representative. So I work with state officers. When a school is elected by the student body in attendance at the conference, a president and a secretary and vice president is elected, and so those are the officers with which I get to work with. But if Harper were selected, she'd have to... I've asked her if that's okay, and she went, I think I can handle this. Anyway, that's quite a, that's quite a, that's a big deal. We ran for office, golly, when I was here, over thirty, it's been thirty years since Alva High Student Council's run for state student council office. It is really, it's a neat thing, a lot of work, but they, they are all to be committed to, it's quite a recognition, and I wish them the best. I don't know if you could vote.
I bet we win.
I hope so.
All righty. Signing of documents approved by earlier action, and a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Say.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.